Is that good? Pick that up. Alrighty, we're gonna, we will go ahead and get started. This is the Board of County Commissioners meeting on July 8, 2025. This meeting will be streamed live on the RBC YouTube channel. I'm calling this meeting to order at 11:01 a.m. And we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public comment period. Any member of the public may address the board on matters which are within the jurisdiction of the board. If you are addressing the board regarding a matter listed on the agenda, you are requested to limit your comments to three minutes per member or five minutes per group. The public comment time is not for questions and answers. It is your time to express your views. To ensure there is adequate public time, comment time, please provide your name and address prior to the meeting by contacting the board assistant at 970-878-9575. If any member of the public would like to comment at this time, please state your name and address for the record. We will begin within the room. Any public comment within the room? See none? Any public comments online? Not seeing any online. This is a tentative agenda which includes all information available as of June 30, 2025. The final tentative agenda will be posted at the RBC Historic Courthouse by 55 Main Street, Meeker, Colorado, and at the Rangelley Town Hall, 209 East Main Street, Rangelley. I would like to move on to line item D.
Chairman, I will make a motion that we approve the agenda as posted.
And I second it.
I have a motion and a second. Will you please call the roll? Motion passes, moving on to line item two, consent items, line item A.
Madam Chair, I would move to approve the below-listed items on the consent agenda, and that would be the payroll management report for July 4, accounts payable management reports for June, meeting minutes for June 24, motor vehicle DMV report for June of 25, and DHS EBT register and warrant register for June.
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions, comments from either of you? Will you please call the roll? Motion passes, moving on to line item three, business. We will be first discussing hazard mitigation plan RFP. So Doug, we have Doug online.
Hi, yes. Yeah, can you hear me?
We can hear you. The floor is yours, sir.
Great. Okay, so I'll start with just our process is that we went through bid net and we had approximately about a one-month opening to look for a consulting firm that would be able to do our HMP. We have a grant for that for this year. It basically terminates in July, so it's one of those things that we have to get on pretty quick. And so we ended up, when we had that bid net survey, which ended, I think last, just this last Monday, and we received four qualified bids. The price ranges were pretty close, the lowest being $48,000, the highest being 70, but three of them were $62,000, $68,000, and $70,000. And so they were all fairly close with each other, all, to good news, falls underneath what we have for the grant. We have $77,000 for the grant, which we have to meet 10% of that within kind contributions. So that's not only my time in managing the project, but also the, you know, fire districts and whatever time that they submit, the county sheriff, the towns, police departments, all of them, just any time that's spent on that. And it should be no problem being able to reach our in-kind contributions without any extra money going out. It's just the time that we're all spending towards this project. So with that, I did a review of the four projects that came in, and I kind of ranked them in order. The way that I looked at this was, one, to make sure that they did fall underneath the grant, so we did not have any extra money that we are not accounting for, you know, to go out, which they all met. Second one was that we wanted to make sure that they did have good project experience. And some obviously had a lot more than others. And another one was, you know, how many projects have they done in Colorado? That, you know, they really spoke to what we have in Rio Blanco with the wildfire aspects, the oil and gas, all of those things where they actually have a lot of experience in the things that we would have a higher risk than, let's say, you know, Virginia or Florida. And so we really wanted to look at that specialty in that niche. So who else, who came out on top and also showed the kind of the rankings of it? But who came in on top was JEO. And they ended up, not only did they do our last hazard mitigation plan five years ago for Rio Blanco, they also did the Rio Blanco Community Wildfire Protection Plan that was done a year, almost two years ago, and it was, it was approved, I think, just a little over a year ago. They also, I'm familiar with them because they also did Eagle Counties a couple of years ago, when I was participating in a lot of the Eagle County aspects of it. And in all three projects, we received good feedback from those who'd worked with JEO that they had done a great job, their end product is great. And only two of the companies that submitted had a deadline that they would be approved by December 31, which is great. One of the recommendations for us were that we at least had the final draft to submit to FEMA and Colorado Department of Homeland Security and Mercy Management. But these two have a timeline experience with their projects. Chalata, they're a huge company that does a ton of stuff, not only teaching and everything else, they have a ton of experience, but most of it is New York and kind of California projects, not a ton in Colorado. They were $68,000. And then Advanced Emergency Management Tech had the least amount of experience listed in their proposal, but they were the lowest cost at $48,000, so they were a lot less. I think they, it looks like they were just entering the business of HMP consulting. But through, through all that, the JEO really came out on top for all of those and felt that the risk is a lot lower, that we do have a working relationship with them. They all obviously have experience with working with Rio Blanco, have been doing two projects over the last five years. And the feedback that we received of those who worked with them was good. And so it's a known product. And with it being under the grant amount, that would be my recommendation to move forward with JEO. And if the, I'm willing to answer any questions possible without going into the 30-page proposals that most of them put together. I don't, I don't want to take that kind of time. But willing to answer any questions that the commissioners might have through that selection process.
I don't have any questions, I'm comfortable with your recommendation.
Doug, this is Callie. I get, I did work with them a little bit here locally and I guess I would just, and it just cautioned you to, it appeared as though timelines might have been a challenge, so you'll just want to stay on top of that. And that could have not been their fault, I don't know for sure, but there was some timeline issues there.
Okay. Okay, great, I definitely appreciate the feedback. And, and yeah, as some of these go, we, the meetings and the public meetings become really difficult to schedule and to get those and not to make an excuse for them, but that is kind of a typical game that happens out there is that they're really dependent on a lot of, a lot of meetings that have to be scheduled with a lot of agencies in each county. And you know how difficult it is to have meetings on a regular schedule and get everyone at the table. But that sometimes definitely happens out in the field of the mitigation planning process. But we'll definitely keep an eye on it, for sure.
I think with your management of it, we'll probably be fine. That's all I got.
Thank you.
So Doug, on that, I guess that my only question is, the contract was included as a part of the RFP. So is that something that you're, Dawn, that is our standard contract that we've used? I didn't notice any changes on that. Do we need to have another meeting before the commissioners execute that? Or is it something that, based on the, the RFP, that they, Doug, can go ahead and proceed with getting JEO signed up and then get us the contract with commissioners to execute?
Ricky, I don't think we need to have another meeting. I think commissioners, if they're to desire us of executing a standard contract with that, they just need to make a moment and then, you know, always like to put it in there, you know, if I see something after it looks like it's that, that's different than what we put in the standard contract, then I can always, you know, require those corrections to be made.
So I can just make a motion to accept the JBO bid and
Award the Contract
with your approval?
Yes, that would be fine.
And I second.
I have a motion and a second. Anything else on that?
Is it JBO?
JE, as in Edward.
No, I wasn't, I didn't have it written down at all that way.
I didn't neither. Will you please call the roll?
Thanks Doug.
Thank you.
We're trying to keep the fires down for you, buddy.
It has definitely helped work on this project without distractions of, of the fire season. So it was good timing. And I'll, I'll work with Don on consult, yeah, of getting that contract up and implemented and signed. And we'll just, if there's any questions or concerns, we can take it back to the commissioners. So thank you, appreciate it. We're ready to move forward with it.
Thanks Doug, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Moving on to line item B.
What's that one, Mike?
Madam Chair, I would move to approve the award of the construction contract for the 2025 Meeker Colter Field General Aviation GA ramp construction project to Elevated Excavating Inc. In the combined total amount of $3,009,097.1, which includes both Schedule 1, which is the FAA eligible, and Schedule 2, non-FAA eligible work.
Yeah, I don't think that needs to be part of the.
I will second that.
I have a motion and a second. We have Eric here, help us with this.
I mean, do you guys have any questions on, on this?
Looks like it was the lowest responsive and responsible bidder authorizations requested for. Let's see, so maybe I should have put that in the contract, but sorry, I'm just talking to myself.
I include that in the note in the response. It didn't need to be added, but yeah, we received three bids. United was providing the paving for all three bids and elevated excavates bid, including United.
I'm good with it.
Yep. You have anything?
No, I'm good.
Will you please call the roll?
Hi. Got out of order, what do you mean?
Motion passes, moving on to line item C.
Line item C is, it was combined, no vote. We, we don't necessarily need to have line item C with the verbiage in line up.
Right, that was part of the.
B1.
Moving on to line item D.
Madam Chairman, I move to approve the work order number four, Braver LLC for the construction phase services related to the EEO Meeker Airport General Aviation Ramp Reconstruction Project in accordance with the master agreement for the professional services. This work order provides for construction phase professional services for the reconstruction of the existing GA ramp at the Meeker Airport.
Same.
I have a motion and a second. Anything additionally you want to add to this?
The only thing is typically in this matter with these projects, you have the engineering, design and engineering prop phase, and we completed that for this project. And then this is the engineering oversight during the construction phase. Both phases were independently a third-party review of the fee on the engineering services per FAA requirements, it has to be within 5%. Both fees were independently reviewed by a third party and it was within the 5%.
Very good, any questions?
No.
All right, will you please call the roll? Moving on to line item E.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the letter regarding the competitive oil and gas lease sale that we discussed in the work session, including the edits that we had suggested.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. We did go into pretty good depth with this during the work session. Asking Reese to make a couple of additions and edits is what we asked of him. So just trying to get this moved forward before it's due and let him make those edits and verify with us. Will you please call the roll? Moving on to line item F.
Madam Chairman, I move to approve a letter of opposition to the Energy and Carbon Management Commission of the proposed rulemaking petition for the Wild Earth Guardians docket
Second.
All right, Kevin, motion and a second. We also discussed this one during our work session, asking Reese, our natural resource director, to make some edits to it, so he'll be doing that. Again, trying to get these letters out before our next the OCC meeting. Will you please call the roll? Motion passes, moving on to line item G.
Madam Chair, I would move to approve the authorization for Rio Blanco County to join Mesa and Garfield Counties in signing a joint letter to Secretary of Interior, Doug Burgum, in support of full federal investment in the Shoshone Water Rights Preservation Project.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Do either one of you want to elaborate on that one?
This is the water rights that for the Landwood Canyon power plant, water rights that are going to remain part of the Western Slope if we can get the money to finish this off, and some of the money is being held up in the federal government now, and that's what we're asking for is that they turn it loose to finish this project up, which is very, very important to the Western Slope.
And it's in the, right at $40 million, I think, from the feds that was awarded, but then, of course, it got held up with it. So, and there are projects like this that they are releasing the money on, so I believe that they will. And then there will be the water court case, because our Eastern Slope folks are opposing it.
Will you please call the roll? Motion passive, moving on to resolutions, line item A.
Madam Chairman, I move to approve Resolution 2025-21, a resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Rio Blanco County voiding a certain check.
I'll step in it so we can get the name and number of that check.
I have a motion and a second. It looks like Johnson Controls were $2,731.17.
Yeah, and what happened is that check included invoices from back in December and early January, it never cleared. And so then Eric was able to get in there and pay those by credit card. And so that's why we're voiding the check.
How much was it for again, sorry?
$2,700. $2,700. $31.17.
Didn't find it, looking right at it.
Will you please call the roll? Motion passes, moving on to public hearings. We will be hearing from Mr. Lee Joy on Hillkey Minor Subdivision PSUB 0004-25.
No, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine, thank you.
More letters and numbers, the more important it is. Well, I just included this, a little 11 by 17, as a supplement to your digital submittal that you guys all have. So, Mr. Commissioner, do you want me to go forth and do the staff report?
Thank you.
Okay, so we had a minor subdivision request from Don and Rosemary Hillkey. Okay, so we had a minor subdivision request from Dawn and Rosemary Hillkey on behalf of Rhonda and her husband out here on the Mesa. They're doing some estate planning. They're doing a single lot subdivision that will include an existing home that's already there where Dawn and Rosemary live. We talk about it like we all know, but and we do, so everybody knows Dawn and Rosemary. So we sent this out for referral agency review. Town of Meeker had no objections. Town of Brangeli, no objections. Rio Blanco County Treasurer reported that taxes were paid in full. There were no objections. The Army Corps of Engineers had no objections. CDOT had no objections. The only interesting response that we did receive was Division of Water Resources post May now. So we have some adjustments in the water and the rights and the permits from the wells. So the existing well that was there had a few issues with how it was permitted. The Division of Water Resources respectively worked with the applicant to get that modified, changed and corrected, even though it was a little post May deadline, the state worked with them well. And they are all correct. We received a final letter approving the well and the subdivision to go forth from the Division of Water Resources. So we ultimately have no objections. At the Planning Commission meeting on June twenty-sixth, we had a vote favor in favor of approving this. Four and zero opposed with no conditions. On the heels of that, the finding staff recommends approval of PSUB zero-zero-zero-four dash twenty-five Hillkey Minor Subdivision with no conditions. Any questions? Yeah, then obviously it's not here. Pretty straightforward.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm glad to see that it's not, I mean, it's, it's basically already done. It's not taking anything out of production.
That is absolutely correct. An estate plan operation.
Do you have anything?
No, I thank you.
Thank you.
So moving on to AI, not AI, but AI.
So let's see. So I need to make that motion, right? Okay, so that's a motion. Okay. So Madam Chair, I would move approval of Resolution twenty-two-five dash nineteen, Resolution Board of County Commissioners of Rio Blanco County, Colorado, approving the Hillkey Minor Subdivision PSUB zero-zero-zero-four dash twenty-five.
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion and a second. Anything else on this? Will you please call the roll?
O'Hairan?
Hi.
Hi.
Moving on to the consideration of PRZ dash zero-zero-zero-three dash twenty-five rezoning of Hillkey Minor Subdivision located on three-seven-seven-six County Road thirteen, Meeker, Colorado, Rio Blanco County, Colorado. I don't know if you have any more you want to add.
No, ma'am, just by land use regulation, anything under thirty or under thirty-five acres that we rezoned to grow residential. So while this still will be agriculturally producing ground, it's a hate field literally around the house. We have to resume for our land use regulation. That's pretty much it.
Madam Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the rezoning of PRZ dash zero-zero-zero-three dash twenty-five rezoning of the Hillkey Minor Subdivision located on three-seven-seven-six County Road thirteen, Meeker, Colorado, Rio Blanco County.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Will you please call the roll?
O'Hairan?
Hi.
Over to you.
Hi.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
I will inform the applicant and then get my law copy for each.
Perfect.
Madam Chair.
Thank you.
I'm good.
You too. We will recess as the Board of County Commissioners and convene as the Board of Social Services, receiving an update from Carmen McKay with the Department of Human Services as the Director. Come on up.
Is it possible now that we usually continue reporting through the Board of Social Services? I think you'd be right.
Um, that would be a question for Dawn. Dawn, is that something the clerk and recorder should be taking minutes on or is that really more Carmen's?
I don't think they take minutes. I'm just not sure who record.
I've noticed minutes that he just puts in there that we.
Yeah, minutes need to be taken, but it doesn't matter. Some counties do it, the clerk and recorder do it, other counties, the the director takes them and presents them the next time.
Are you guys okay with me needing to get recording just in case she doesn't?
I'm good with that.
Hello. Oh, there's a lot going on with us. We don't have a lot of details. I have a meeting tomorrow tomorrow with the directors to move forward on that. And what is going to happen next? Snap on counties like that. So that's tomorrow with our the huge terms of our twenty-twenty-five as well as twenty-twenty-six. I think just moving forward on what's going to happen because there's a lot of questions from us like, okay, what's next?
Does that mean the last half of twenty-five, moving forward, you said?
Yes, well, it starts in our new fiscal year starts July one. It already started and it ends June.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So just to kind of give you a heads up, and we all know that the big beautiful bill did pass. There will be changes with SNAP and when I pull that up and I read some of that. Some of the discussions have already been discussed, kind of like what would, what would we see if that did pass? So there's some changes with SNAP and Medicaid laid out in that bill. I think you guys all have probably have copies of that, right?
Of the big beautiful bill?
Yeah.
No, because it's really big, but I've seen, I've seen snippets of it. Let's put it that way.
Yeah, it is pretty big. So I, I pulled like the SNAP course in Medicaid and kind of read through some of that.
So I'm going to, sorry, so I text Congressman Hurd to just make sure that I was understanding because Carmen and I had met to go over some of those variables as far as what those impacts are. He didn't really give me any dates except for Medicaid. But with SNAP, he said that anybody under the six percent error rate will still be fully funded. If it goes over the six to eight percent rate error rate, it's ninety-five percent. And then it goes down from there depending on where your error rate is. So Rio Blanco is at a zero percent. And so it is, it's a huge feat, but here's, and this is one of the things that Carmen and I talked about is do we put some legislation out there for SNAP? And I don't know that until we meet with CHSDA and CCI. We have a meeting set up next Friday to go over some of these conversations and in making sure that the counties in Colorado that are keeping their error rates under that six percent get their full allotment so that it's not, it's not coming back on the counties that are doing their job versus the ones that have that anywhere from six to ten percent error rate because every, you know, every couple of error rates, it's going down about five to ten percent. So I would like to see something. I don't know if anybody else is going to support that. I'm sure we'll get kickback probably from the bigger counties because they're probably
The errors.
Yes. So anyway, that's something that Carmen and I talked about. I did send an email to everybody and said, we need to have this conversation when we meet next week. And so hopefully we'll know more there. Now to touch up on, do you want to, do you have a question?
So, but the feds are looking at it by the state, right? Or is it by each individual county?
No.
So they're going to average the state.
Yeah, right now we're at nine point nine seven six as a state. So they brought it to ten, which would be on the grid right now.
Okay, so that's where, yeah, that's going to be hard, but yes, no, I think it's absolutely worth the battle.
Yeah.
So is that something, I guess, the other organizations besides CCI will push that?
That's why with CHSDA, yes, that's why we want to have that conversation with them. Well, their, their director is going to be on this call. And our lobbyist just from CCI will be on the call, so.
That's going to be really hard to do because they've already taken the money. And if you ask for some of it back, that just increases it. It's, that's going to be hard to ask for something that's not there.
Yeah, because this yeah, how do you think how that'll work out? Well, the feds have taken.
Yeah, yeah, we're being punished for, for the people that have the error rates.
And error rates are contributed to a couple of different things. It's not only on the tech, it's also maybe on the client and the state. If something is data entered incorrectly, you know, that can reflect that. And if the state, there's something going on that, because it can come down to timeliness, which our staff is really, really huge on. And processing those applications, that's where the tech part is, that data entry as well. That's why I think it is important to have that conversation as well because how is that, you know, the county, individual counties responsibilities if there's other factors besides just the worker that contribute to the per rate?
I, I, I agree with that, but if, if I'm understanding correctly, they're going, they're going to take ten percent away and if they then up Rio Blanco's, it's going to mean that they're, the other people are going to get eleven percent off or twelve or however the number works out.
It'll be hard, but I think, yeah, worth a shot.
Yeah, I agree.
We make an issue of it.
We need to. Yes, I agree.
Well, to me, maybe just to elaborate a little bit. So yes, they'll take that, we're only going to get that eighty-five percent from the feds because we are at that higher rate. Then those counties that are not doing, that have that higher rate, then it needs, needs to be counting only dollars. And why is Rio Blanco County being punished when we are doing our job and you need to? We need to be looking at those same ratios individually within our state is, I guess, how I look at it. Are, were you thinking the same thing? Okay. Anymore on that one? Because then I'll move on to Medicaid, his response on Medicaid, which I found interesting. The Medicaid is a little bit more complex, but for Colorado, we maintain the fifty-fifty split for core Medicaid populations and ninety-ten for ACA expansion populations. But beginning in twenty-twenty-eight, we ran down the provider fee limits, which states use to boost federal Medicaid drawdowns by zero-point-five percent per year from six to cent percent to three-point-five percent over the course of five years. So the, the way that I'm reading this, and tell me if I'm wrong, is that because of the ACA Medicaid extension that Colorado implemented, they're, they're going to be looking at the, we'll lose percentage, percentages of that ACA ninety-ten over the course of five years.
That's what I'm understanding, but again, we're, you know, still kind of in
Okay.
Just so we understand clearly on what.
Okay. Okay. So is it? Is that another piece of legislation that needs to happen that we go away with ACA expansion? Or do you think that's ever going to happen in the state of Colorado?
I don't know that it'll happen.
It's an uphill battle if I bring it up. Still got to ask, right?
Say, why not? So explain expansion to us.
You want to?
You can, right?
So Medicaid, and this goes back to Obamacare is what this comes back to is, is they allowed during, it was during the Biden administration, or am I correct, incorrect on the expansion piece? So the expansion expands, who qualifies for Medicaid? And that includes non-citizens. And that's, that's the piece that I, I know I get stuck on because they're not paying into our system. They're not paying taxes to then be getting these services under Medicaid. And so they're also expanding it to work requirements with able-bodied now. So before you didn't have that component and that was part of that expansion piece, if I'm remembering correctly.
Because we had initially, we had liprolin and that's when people that were not US citizens, basically. And they did come in and, you know, because it's exactly what sounds like, it's liprolin. They can get that liprolin for what was happening at that moment in their life medically. And they had to do, you know, get information from the doctor to make sure it was in it without under our liprolin requirements. January first of twenty-twenty-five, that expanded a little bit more to have undocumented, be able to apply for Medicaid. It was pregnant women and children after a surgery.
And the work requirements is for everyone. Is that true?
If they find a certain
Yeah. Okay. Yes. And it's only twenty hours a week and it can be voluntary, voluntary.
All right.
That's very good.
Thank you.
Making sure I understand.
So do you have any other questions for me here right now? Right to?
Yeah, I don't have any more on HR one till we.
Okay, so basically, as you probably know, we will be working on what's next for us. We'll be able to share more as, I'll be able to share more as I hear myself. And there are certain things laid out, like timeframes when we need to do certain things, of course. And so we'll be working on that. We have not heard from Hick, because we received our grant that's supposed to be within the next couple of weeks for Hick and everything that happens in those timeframes and education and stuff for our staff, make sure we're on top of it. The, let's see, what else do we have? We did initiate this with Jennifer for the Hick decision summary. There were two different options that were laid out for counties. We did select option A, which is basically that we'll collaborate. There's collaboration between county departments, state departments that we will work together. So that was chosen because, you know, there's a lot more wording in how the state will have to work with. But that's why me as Rio Blanco decided that option A would be better than option B. Option B was more or less may engage whereas option A was shall, you know, there's a lot more wording. And then I know with those questions about like caseloads and all of that, I did pull our report. Right now we have, and these are again, what we discussed the first time it came is it can be combination of cases like med and food or just food or just net. So it's just everything right now. Right now our total is one thousand one hundred and thirty cases. So that's where we're sitting as far as that goes. We do have our new person, Daisy is currently training. She just finished her Magi and she's going to go into her SNAP training now. So working on that one. Adriana, our child shopper, she's doing amazing. And she's up and going as well. So that's, uh huh, a thing for us. Um. I couldn't think of anything else besides. Uh, we did get the fact sheet, um, I did show that with you, Jen, on the air rates, so if you guys do need that too. Show that with everyone, to kind of just more of a breakdown. Of certain things as of July third. Um, any other questions?
Nice question.
I have more, like I said, once we are meeting, like that, that.
I, I think to answer your question, when you had asked, or is this something that's gonna be implemented sooner than later?
Hmm.
I don't, I, my understanding in looking at it and the fact sheets that C H S D A has broken down is it's. I believe SNAP begins in twenty six or twenty seven.
Yeah.
And Medicaid's twenty eight, so we've got, we've got a little bit of time to play with it.
Yeah.
And figure out what that's gonna look like for us, and that's why if we can get some legislation going, if we can get that support sooner than later, then. Maybe we'll know where we stand too. In our county.
Oh, so it took a little more time.
Yeah, and that's because of our, our rate.
Hmm.
Cause we sent that.
Okay. Anything else?
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Um, alrighty, uh, we will adjourn the Board of Social Services. And re-convene as Board of County Commissioners. And we will move on to other business, uh, road and bridge updates, we have that here.
Everybody?
Good, how are you?
So road and bridge update for Maker. Finished up Mag and County Road eight. Uh, hauled gravel to County Road seventeen. Mag part of seventeen, Mag sleep cap pit hill. Uh, waited Oak Ridge access, put some gravel on County Road sixty-three. Uh, gravel to Bachman Pit Hill. We had to remove some trees off County Road eight and seventeen. Uh, did some earth bind, which is kind of like a mag. On, uh, Mason Agency and County Road thirty-six, connect the fairgrounds. Cleaned some culverts on seventeen. In Rangeley, crack filling on County Road one oh eight, one thirty-two, one oh one, and one thirty-two A. Uh, bladed roads twenty-seven, one thirty-one, one sixteen, one thirteen, seventy-three, one hundred and ninety-six. Installed six culverts on twenty-seven, cleaned four cattle guards on twenty-seven. Did some pit work in Spring Creek and East Douglas. Uh, had a washout on one thirty-eight that we filled in. Um, all the pit runs to twenty-seven for some culverts. And tree trimming on forty-six and swept the road on forty-six.
Can you tell me about earth bind? Is this, uh, uh, we've been doing this two, three years now?
Done it for three years, um, so earth bind. It holds the gravel together on the road.
Right.
Plus it also sheds the water where it's.
Is that, I'm sorry, is that after? Magging it?
No.
In place.
You can, you can do an enhancement, but we haven't done any of the enhancement. We're trying, just to find out. Because hopefully, we don't have to come back and keep doing every year with the earth bind.
Right. So County Road thirty-three, is that sheep creek?
Yeah.
Um, did you put it on that one?
We haven't been there yet. Um, we are on County Road fifteen right now.
How is that feeling? Is it working? Is it?
Yeah, I just actually drove up on Mason Agency and, uh, thirty-six, which is baseline, and. I like it. You seem to like it too. It, it sheds the water, so it doesn't pick up and get on your car and, like mag, I mean, it's, it's a dust control. But the mag, you drive in it, and it gets wet, it'll blow the gravel right off the road where this is keeping the gravel on the road better.
On the other day, I was on twelve, I guess, there below the house, and it had rained. Muddy, slick, slimy. I didn't realize it did that, so, and the difference in the cost between them is big, right?
Uh, it depends on the, you know, shot ratio, um. We're playing around with the shot ratio right now of what works better. It's always gonna be different from your gravels, from one road to the next, and. Um. It's about the same. It's a little bit cheaper, actually. Because we do apply ourselves.
Well, that's the other, is that in addition to the price of the, of it, you can just do it yourself versus having to pay somebody else?
The cheaper part, yes, yes.
Yeah. I'm excited about it. And you have to do it three or four years before?
So two years, and then hopefully you can skip a year and then do it again, but again, it just depends on, you know, if you get somebody out there on a tractor or.
Somebody helps you.
Yeah.
So. Does that work better or as well holding the washboards out of the road?
Yeah, it, it's actually better, I think. We're gonna actually put it on, um, the Bachman Pit Hill this year. Put it on the hill with truck traffic and see how it holds up.
I mean, I understand that they did put it on thirty-three time or two, is that right?
We've done it, I think, twice. Uh, the first year it did get cut off, um.
We got over the.
Blew it apart, and then the second year, I don't think the shot ratio was heavy enough.
So I just, so I went over Ripple Creek and Dump Clay the other day and. Our roads are in not better shape, so thank you. And have near the washboarding, but the other one did.
I did, also, you can tell when the county lighted.
Yeah, yeah, so thank you. It was good. Can travel right along. So. And the other thing, thank you for your work and so forth this weekend too. I know you were involved in calls and I will just, I did get to have conversations with a lot of the. Um, I, I shouldn't say a lot, a few contestants, few of the people that were involved in putting the rodeos on and that kind of thing, and. And everybody had really good things to say, so. That was a good thing to see and hear and so forth, so thank you to. You and Nick and Justin, Justin, right? Is that the young man's name? Okay. Thank you. That's a big, that's a big job out there. That weekend was pretty crazy. Yeah, it's pretty crazy. Well, I get it.
That we hope we never hear about, right?
Yeah, good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, moving on to line item B, County Attorney update.
The only update I really have today is the, uh, uh, we have got the information to the, uh, attorneys for the, uh, Western Slope, uh. Colorado Oil and Gas, uh, Association, uh, for response to the state's motion to dismiss, so. I anticipate that will be filed today, uh, for the, for the counties and for the, uh, Western Slope Oil and Gas Commission, or Oil and Gas, uh, Association. Um, the, uh, uh, they did a pretty good job with it. I, I was very pleased with, with what it said. We'll see how the court responds, but. And I think that's really all I have.
We like it when the attorney's report is small because that means we're not in trouble and doing things okay.
Either that or I've been at a wedding in Kansas for the last week.
Anything else? Oh, thank you, Don. Uh, moving on to the County Administrator update.
Hi Commissioners, um, so first and foremost, um, just to introduce Lynn Lockwood, who is your. Uh, Communications Coordinator. She is the new, going to be the new A D A. Coordinator, um, so especially on the website and technologies, things like that. So Lynn, thank you, welcome aboard. That's gonna be a huge relief, um. For, I think for, for both, certainly for Chrissy and I, as some of that burden gets, you know, separated out. Um, so we'll have some meetings. I expect Lynn to meet with you each individually at some point to kind of get your thoughts on how you want those communications to work. Um, while she's under my purview, I, that's one of these things where, you know, she's probably gonna have a lot of interaction with you guys individually, so. Um, just very excited. We actually got her up on the website to start with, um. So she's, I mean, this just started yesterday, so she dove right in and I couldn't have punted faster for her, so. Um, so there is a lot of things, um, that, uh, we will have in the works in communications between, especially between her and I and. And how we handle things and, and her and Chrissy and her and Laura, and, I mean, you expect this relationship, she'll, she's hit the ground running, so. Yeah, um, let's see. Performance reviews and budget planning, so I still have some, uh, performance reviews that are out there. Getting finalized and being turned in, uh, missed the deadline by just a little bit, but there's some departments that had, of course, considerable number of reviews to get done, so. I plan on those being done in the next week or so, um. The next step is to, um. And meet with you guys, uh, this spreadsheet that Laura has prepared where you can play around with the. Uh, percentages of increases, for instance, or dollar increases, changes of insurance, that spreadsheet. Um, I've asked Laura to revamp that so that it'll put the departments that are together. So that you'll be able to identify each department's budget, each office's elected official's budget separately. Um, I think that will help, um, as we're working through that, so you can see those, uh, you know, how those things interact. Um, again, what we were looking for on that is to be able to have a good view of where we're at, like a high, medium, and a low. Um, you know, if this is the way we keep things, this is that, and we kind of plan on this. Three-tier system as we go into the other parts of the budget. Um, you know, personnel costs is not something necessarily the, you know, the employee factor part of that is probably not gonna change a whole lot, the benefits is what could change. Um, but again, we'll have a clear direction or a better idea of what that is going into the budget rather than on the backside of the budget, so. For that, um, one of the other things I've talked with, um. Oh, one of the things I've got the budget calendar sent out, so hopefully I've got just about everybody's time off. Um. If you emailed me, Jennifer, yours, okay, if you just wanna send me an email of the dates you will not be available. Then what I'm trying to do is coordinate your schedules with the departments that you're signed up for, and then also time off and things that you need to have off. Uh, so that we can work out those individual budget scrubs. And then we will, I'm sorry.
So I was just sitting here thinking, I've probably added things on my calendar since I give you that, that I may not have. Communicated to you, so I'll have to look at that again.
Okay.
That'll be the challenge.
Yeah, so, you know, the, really the time off, because having to balance that between all the different departments will be a little bit of a challenge. Uh, rather than me just pick days, because then, you know, it seems like, you know, there's. Important reasons why you might wanna be off, and, and it also for the directors and the department heads and the, and the other electeds. So hopefully I'll have that wrapped up, um, for you, your adoption on the next meeting. The other piece to that meeting will be a discussion of the granting, whether you decide you want to grant funds or not. I'd sent you an email. Uh, the previous week, um, about that, that is another discussion we need to have on that next agenda. Of, you know, what is your direction regarding grants? Um, so, you know, we can have that discussion then, but just be.
And that'll be a work session?
Yeah, um. Typically, yeah, I mean, that can be a work session, um, I think the, typically there's been a formal direction. Um, on the record of what you guys want to do as far as, you know, whether, you know, I, I think. I'm pretty sure it was a, a regular meeting where, you know, no, we're not gonna do any grants except for emergencies. Or this year's gonna be grants that we're gonna grant out to other entities outside the county. This is gonna be a year where we're gonna grant just to inside. You know, the county infrastructure project, so. You know, I think there'll probably be some formal direction that you'll need to give me on, on that day. On next meeting in Rangeley. Um, my last conversation with Renee is that we have not had any, uh, County Board of Equalization appeals as of yet. That she's not been able to settle. That could change at any moment. Um, so I'm not anticipating a full afternoon on Tuesday, um, of appeals or then that following Wednesday. Not having those yet. Now, that could change. Again, we still have time, so. Don't pencil it in yet, but usually if they're pretty interested in appealing, we, we've heard by now. Um, E Bailey follow-up, you had asked that we put together a, uh, kind of the follow-up and the recommendations. That is scheduled for July seventeenth. So Dawn and Lisa and I got together and kind of worked out some, you know, worked through the report and saying, okay, here's how we think we should tackle these things. And then we will be presenting those ideas to you on the seventeenth and getting your direction from there. Um. Fairgrounds update, uh, range call, I think went off really, really well. Uh, there's always a little, a few minor hiccups. I had some conversations with Commissioner Stritchfield over the weekend, and I think we were able to address concerns. Uh, thanks to Thad and thanks to Nick and Justin, um, I think things got addressed fairly quickly. Um, one of the things we've been, uh, and I talked that with Callie and I've talked with, um. Jane and I'm trying to think who else I talked with, is, is looking about possibly doing some kind of. Group that we get together, not that county-appointed board like you used to have, which tended to be a challenge, um, when we had the actual fairgrounds board that the commissioners appointed to. More looking at this from a standpoint of maybe a single meeting where we, if we get, uh. The range call folks in, the fair board in, um, some equestrian people, maybe some, I don't know, what, whatever the different events are, because. Each event can have its own criteria, and talking with Callie, we were looking at the different things that the fairgrounds has historically had, you know. Small clinics, large clinics, uh, barrel racers.
Gymcannas, gym.
Gym, there, there was just a lot of different things, and each one may have a different criteria. And really being able to maybe dive in and get what their thoughts are of what works best for them. So that we have kind of more of a, a way to, when an event comes up, it's gonna be a gymcanner, we know we're gonna have to do these things, or if it's gonna be. You know, barrel racers, they're gonna have a different criteria of what that needs to look at, so. Rather than kind of looking at this as a, a one-on-one thing, maybe more, and I know they're working on an application process that says, you know. Um, I'm gonna need lights, for instance, and they check a box, and they're, they're gonna need this, and we want the grounds water that every three hours or every ten hour, whatever that, those. Parameters are, we kind of identify those and get that in a single sheet, so people can do more of a. Morning board, but then we're being fair to everyone and addressing those concerns on the front end rather than having to play catch-up on the back end.
Thank you. I'm just sitting here thinking, is that an opportunity to do a post? Post rodeo event like we did with the fair that brings everybody together? And not only can they tell you what they need or what they, but they also hear the opposition or the reasons why we do things. Explanations that might, is, is that an opportunity to do that? And did all of that stuff put together?
I think it is, um, you know, I think it's one of those things, just like with the airboard, we wanna make sure that it's not just a break session.
Right.
You know, it's a, you know, let's document the things that we wanna see done differently, you know, and. Not a blame placing or anything like that, but how do we make it even better? One of the things that came up out of the last year's fair board wrap-up meeting was the idea to, you know, increase county employee participation. Well, we've got there. And I'm happy to report, it sounds like we're gonna have really good turnout on the setup day of Rio Blanco County employees. It sounds like the fair board has also got several people in the midst that, you know, typically, they do that, typically they've handled that. they do that. Typically, they've handled that. Um, but, you know, just that whole, thought between, you know, having extra support for fairgrounds, for the fair board, for the ladies in four H. We can now cover that and the policy that, um, I've submitted to you all. I haven't heard back, I don't think, from everyone, but, um, you know, I think it's a very fair, the starting place. And maybe this is something that will trickle down to other entities that says, if you're gonna volunteer for the Rio Blanco County Fair, at this point, we're gonna offer eight hours of volunteer time off, you know. So our employees can assist with those things that we need to do. Um, again, there's some criteria in there. They gotta make sure that it is something that can be, you know, that their director or their supervisor can allow them to be out during that time, but, that was one of the things that generated right out of that. The other thing was the, you know, having a party, having a, this is great, let's all get together. So we got the hot dogs purchased, we got the, chips purchased. I think that's the wrap-up thing can be very beneficial and then getting those folks together that says, we need you to do this so that this goes off smoothly.
And and just to add to that a little bit, I think that it's more than that. I think that it's, all of the problems and all, the the things we do wrong and the things we do right. It's more, a lot of times it's just communications. It's just talking about them so that everybody hears the same thing. And I think a meeting like that is really important so that the person that's complaining can listen to somebody else and understand why that stuff is happening. I I think that's huge when it comes to that.
They see the bigger picture.
Right.
Than just my piece of it.
Yes.
Well, that's good. Too, when you go back to the county tour, asset tour that we took, where we were able to go out and compare, or contrast or view, you know, with four different counties. And of course, the the town showed us a couple of different things that they were doing. Um, but just to have everybody in the same room to be able to see, you know, I I think it was very eye-opening and Eric did a phenomenal job, showing the differences between the Meeker Airport, the Rangeley Airport, and then, uh, Thad and and Nick were there and Tina were there to show the difference between, you know, Eric did Columbine Park, but then they represented, you know, the fairgrounds and and what does that look like? So I think those more of those conversations will happen, um, as we get into it, but I think that's the thing is, you know, don't just come to complain, let's have a solution. So I thought that, you know, will well.
And I did, I did ask, um, Travis Goodwin, I think is, um, I think he's chair now of the, range call board. And so we did talk about doing a follow-up meeting. So I expect he'll make that request.
And and I do think, you know, we had some really good, I received some really good compliments on how everything was ran. Um, so a shout out to Nick. I think, you know, there's there's room for improvement. We have some things we can do, but I know he spent a lot of hours there, as well as Justin, and that was, you know, helping out also as well. So I think it was good team effort. And I, so I think it was, it was a success and looking forward to a success at at fair coming up too. Um, so just looking at something was coming up, uh, we have the RFP bid opening tomorrow on the, um, looking at those T-lines, the fairgrounds bathrooms. Even with restricted access to those bathrooms this weekend, um, we still had clogged toilets. And really clogged, not just one person clogged, but, over the top, you think if the water's to the top level and there's tons of toilet paper and stuff in there that you wouldn't use it, but.
I I thought we were gonna close the bathroom.
They were closed except for a few, um, you know, a smaller number of people. It was not open to the general public. So again, it's because it's not necessarily because of, the various beings. I think it's more, it just backed up and people were like, oh, didn't see that and late now. And so, it's, we hope to get that fixed. So I'll let you know how that RFP comes out.
Yeah, sooner the better.
Yeah. Certainly not as bad as it has been in past years. I did get that from Elsa and her staff. It was definitely much, much better. There's only one toilet that was affected. Not several of them, and they weren't cleaning up messes on the floor, so. Um, and no vomit this year. Woo-hoo! And that's usually a big one. Um, so, uh, looking ahead, uh, we do have, I've been working with, um, Enterprise and with, uh, the other one, now I'm on the line on, um.
Unified?
Unified, thank you. Enterprise and Unified. Um, so on the twenty-third, we'll be able to present some options to you guys to even look and determine whether you think, leasing is a good point for us or a good thing for us in this in this time period. We have a follow-up meeting this next week. Um, with, um, Enterprise. So with, uh, Ryan and Tina, Thad and I, um, just asking some questions and trying to refine that process. Interestingly enough, the county administrators, um, that I'm on a a group with, um, they went back and forth and the results are split between whether they feel like it's been a good thing or a bad thing, whether it's been with Enterprise or with Unified. Um, a lot of outfitting issues more so with Enterprise, that it takes them close to six months to a year to take like sheriff's vehicle and get it outfitted. Unified seems to be faster on that. Um, but again, it it was kind of a mixed bag, so. Yeah, we're just gonna have to see that. Um, the way I already mentioned to you about the fair setup party. So, um, that will be on July twentieth, which is a Sunday from ten to two. Um, and then there will be other volunteer opportunities that we will, um, be able to help hopefully throughout the those two weeks of fair. Um, ooh, what else? Uh, the, there will be a dance, uh, on Friday night. Uh, the county has agreed to help sponsor that. We will be, uh, providing the band. And so I'll be working on getting that, those funds over to, uh, the fair board so that they can get that going. We're still not quite sure about where that venue is. It will be at the fairgrounds. We're just making sure that we've got enough power in the places where they wanted to have it or. Put that by ear. I think the last thing I'll just mention is that I went to a, a really good class this past weekend, weekend before last. And, uh, it was about, understanding a process and then possibly modifying it. And in using Monday, I'm really hopeful that on, that using that Monday software will help me to communicate better with the three of you and get direction, be able to pass that information on in a concise manner, where you're not violating any sunshine laws because you're not communicating together, that that you'll see the direction that, you know, the others are instructing me so we can have more productive, quicker conversations. And then when we need to set up a work session, we set up a work session, or a special meeting or whatever that may be, but I'm I'm really hopeful hopeful that this new process will expedite that. Um, that training for you all and making sure you're up on Monday will be on July twenty-third. It will, if we have any, I haven't sent you an invite yet if you're looking for one yet. That is scheduled for CDO hearings. In anticipation that we might not have those, since we had that blocked off. I went ahead and utilized that thinking, ooh, I've got your captive. If we could always pencil them in or before or after. So and Eric thought it'd take about an hour to make sure that everybody was up and comfortable with it. That's it.
All right. Thank you. Yes, Vicky. Uh, moving on to county commissioner update. Fair, I'll go, cause mine's fairly brief. So, um, the Yellow Jacket special work session, we all did that. And then that afternoon went to the AGNC board meeting, and which followed by two days of the Jolt Conference. Um, I did attend the Colorado Cattlemen's, oh, nope, wrong thing, sorry. That was a while ago. Um, I attended the interim Ag Water Committee, I via Zoom, um, it was in Denver. Um, the in, the legislative interim committees, they've only got a couple of them. They're letting it happen this year. Um, and this is one of them. And our Wolf Coalition had, um, set up, I think there were five people that spoke to it. Um, and had a really good conversation with that, and then that was followed by an act. Um, let's see, then CPW leadership was a part of the question, you know, it was another panel. And, um, I will say that interim committee, which is made up of both senators and, House representatives, were all very, very supportive of the Ag guys. Um, I would say there was only one that wasn't necessarily, and I would say that was the chairperson. Um, but they really grilled them and made it pretty clear that, because they are over three million dollars over the last year, on the wolves and, um, frustrated that it is that much money. And asking a lot of questions as to why, and there's not a lot of answers. Of course, they blame it all on, you know, the cost that they're paying to producers and for the non-lethal and all of that, but that was all a part of the, um, uh, ballot initiative. So anyway, I think it was very valuable and was worth the while there. Um, then I met with Vicky to try to help me get started understanding budget stuff, um, preparing for the next couple of months, and then attended the parade and the rodeo on Sunday. That would be me for the week, two weeks.
Okay, um, we did meet with, uh, Yellow Jacket, about the water, trying to figure out how we can assist them with the water, at Lake Avery, and we are going to, I'm gonna be at a meeting tomorrow, uh, session at Lake Avery so they can present their ideas, what's happening there. Um, we are working on an MOU to present to Yellow Jacket, to help them along this project, process. And I hope that gets, helps. Um, then I went to the AGNC meeting. And, uh, after the AGNC meeting, we went to the Jolt, uh, Just Organizations Leading Transition. And we, wha- what we talked about there or their presentations were, uh, solar panels, battery storage, geothermal, a nuclear, a mix of all of that stuff. And it just was, um, they had the governor of of Wyoming come down and speak. They had this in Colorado. They asked Mr. Polis to come and he didn't even respond, so they got the governor from Wyoming to come down. And he brought up some points, uh, lightly, politically correct, however you wanna say it. But Colorado, I mentioned this a while ago, Colorado is is being a bunch of hypocrites because, we don't want, dirty air. We want to save the world by, by cutting back on oil and gas production and all of that. And the world is not gonna wait on us. They're, they need energy, they're gonna get it somewhere. And all that does is force them to go across state lines and get it. And most generally, they are creating more pollution than the Colorado is, so. It's, it's, it doesn't work out. And it just, in the end, it doesn't work out and we're a bunch of hypocrites. I don't know why they insist on doing that, but it's obvious from where I sit, but, we sit different places, I guess. And then we hurried up and came back home to, uh, Meeker, all three of us did, to meet with, uh, Senator Roberts and Representative Lukens about, uh, they gave a report of what they did in the last year. And I think we, all three intended on talking to them a little more, but there was enough public participation that we didn't really get a chance, so. I think they're gonna come back and talk to us later, with the commissioner so we can get a little more, in-depth with them. And I went on the, uh, county assets tour, and that was a an eye-opener for, a lot of people that went, I think, it's kind of strange how we get narrowed in on our, on what's in our community and and don't look around. It it, I think it helps. Uh, then we went, I went to the Wolf Coalition meeting. And, um, it was brought up that, you know, that, they finally got him to admit that they spent three million dollars on wolves. And that is way more than the public ever thought it was gonna be. The the public thought it was gonna be in that bill somehow, that it was gonna cost eight hundred thousand, and here we are, three million. And they asked the, uh, in that CPW meeting, they asked them to postpone that, and they pretty much, gotta know, we are going to introduce more wolves, no matter what it costs. So, um, I'm disappointed, and that's my report.
I think I heard a little more tentativeness on that in the joint house. Then Ag interim committee, I thought it was interesting. In fact, there was a, there was an if in there, and they got questioned on it pretty hard.
So that, we've got the CPW and the and the governor's group, and then we've got the legislation, and you're saying that the legislation is a little.
No, it was CPW speaking to those legislators was a little more iffy on that. I think they, because remember in the, um, in the budget, there is that footnote that says,
Right.
we gotta have things in order before you bring more wolves in. So the legislature made their statement there that you get this straightened out, or, um, you don't. And I did forget, I did, I also attended the CPW Wolf Meeting yesterday, that, um, their special Wolf Meeting on that pack.
Right, and I.
Did you listen in on that?
I listened to that also. I was on the tractor, but I was able to listen to it.
I'm impressed. You're following Jennifer through double tracking.
So the, uh, uh, the the other interesting thing that I just remembered is is with this Wolf Coalition and and what they discussed is they, in that CPW meeting is they, they specifically said the reason it costs three million dollars is because they did not follow, their own plan. That's why they spent all the money, is they did not follow their own plan.
They are not following that plan whatsoever.
Was there a JBC member at your meeting? I'm just curious.
On the meeting at the.
The Ag, interim Ag.
The interim Ag. I don't know who all it is, but I don't know that there, I don't know of anybody that was. I think they were all Ag people, and I don't know of a very Aggy person that is on the JBC.
Yeah, okay. I was just carrying it.
No.
Okay. Uh, thank you. Um, I think really quick and and you two jump in on this one. Um, we did have a public comment on the healing healing center last month. And, uh, just wanted to, um, let everybody know that we do have a moratorium on the healing centers, um, at this point until we can figure out our, um, zoning codes. Moving forward and making sure that if there is ever one here, that, we are doing it safely and soundly for our constituents as well as the people that participate in these healing centers. Unfortunately, um, with this proposition, the state became more savvy, via the marijuana bill, that we were able to do a moratorium indefinitely on marijuana's, um, stores, I guess is what you would call them. I don't know what you wanna call them. So they then did this proposition to create healing centers, that people can do basically psychedelics, um,
Mushrooms.
Mushrooms. Um, and they, you can't do a moratorium unfortunately on it. We can do a moratorium, just for a short stint, to get some things into place to make sure that everybody's, um, safe and well-being is done. Do you guys wanna add anymore to that? I just wanted to make a comment that I wish we could say there's a forever moratorium on it, quite honestly, but.
We we appreciate the comment that we got and are sympathetic, but our hands are tied. They, they learned when when we will not let marijuana into the county, they learned that they had to put it in the bill and we can't keep them out now.
Okay, um, I also attended Jolt, um, AGNC, uh, the Yellow Jacket Lake Avery dam meeting. Um, I attended a NACO Public Lands Meeting. Um, met with staff as well as Vicky. And I met with, um, Ellen Parker, the new town of Rangeley. And I met with um Ellen Parker, the new town of Rangeley, um town manager um to talk about, you know, ways that we can be working together, one of them being um, you know, I was looking at doing a um CDS grant for one thirty nine um and needing that support. And so one of the measures I have to have to submit that is community input. And I have looked high and low for community input on one thirty nine and community assessments have been done. And it's only mentioned as a recreation road. It's not that it needs to be fixed. And so uh Ellen and I had that conversation of, you know, how do we get the community input to make sure that you know, we have that, that yes, this is what the community wants in getting one thirty nine done. So that was part of our conversation. He talked to me a little bit about the animal shelter and the condition of the animal shelter in uh Rangeley. Um it it's seen better days. Um, and so we, you know, we talked a little bit about, you know, what if you farmed them out? What if you, you know, what would that look like instead of rebuilding a building? They are looking at, they already have a building reen- or engineered and ready to 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 be looked into, but it's the cost and and you know, he says, you know, then I hear the severance tax being pulled back, which is gonna impact my town. And so anyway, him and I had some really good conversations. Um, probably spent a couple hours together and it was his day off. It was the day before Fourth of July, so I appreciated him meeting with me, so. Um talking about severance tax, I found out over the weekend that um there is a severance tax force. That there was a a bill, then I I wasn't aware of this.
Neither until he said that.
And Sean Bolton is, was appointed by Rose, our representative Rose Poglis. Um, is she, she used her appointment with Sean. So uh we will have at least Rio Blanco County represented on this tax work, which I'm really super excited about.
What that, what that is real quick is it is uh, the governor has shut down oil and gas, or he's shutting it down, so there is no severance tax. So this bill is, has formed this committee to try and replace severance tax money. And they're supposed to look around and figure out how to do that.
Look out fees.
You're probably right.
Because they can't do taxes without going to the vote and they can't get that.
That's the end of, oh, did you have something else?
Um, just a suggestion on one thirty nine, look at the accidents. See if you can work that into that somehow, because there's a bunch of.
We um, when I say we, I actually met with CDA, uh Mark Rogers, and he showed me how to get on, um there's a map on CDOT and it pulled that kind of information and he, he was showing, and I was actually a little overwhelmed, but there's a lot of data in there that shows any road in Colorado and how many accidents, even how many trucks drive over that road. Like he was saying, that's pretty high. And I said, well, are those producer trucks, operator trucks? And he said, yeah, probably. You're that, you're probably right. And I said, and that's where, you know, oil and gas comes over that road, they're carrying it up, and then the state doesn't want to replace it. And so how do we get producers involved or operators involved in in that conversation? So yes, I, Marv did help me pull some of those numbers, but thank you, yeah.
It was interesting just from my uh involvement with the fire department in rebuilding the road county or state thirteen going south. It was interesting, it was very obvious that every time they built a section of road, improved it down there, our responses to accidents went way down.
Hmm, interesting.
And they just don't have them down there anymore like they used to.
Don't have all the people passing where they shouldn't necessarily, because they think, they know there is a passing lane coming up. So I guess the other thing that come to my mind, and when you're doing research is, I mean, the hospital, how many ambulances do they send over the hill? And then just talking to people, you know, get, doing a survey and how many people go down there for medical and stuff like that. I know that they can go to Utah too, but if the road was decent, they'd probably more go to Grand Junction.
So Kyle, the CEO, him and I, he's, he will put that in his letter of support if this is you know, our emergency responses and um what do they call those where they take them over the mountain over to. Transfer, thank you. How many transfers they do within a certain time period? So, yeah. He's, he's definitely gonna do that letter of support for that because they get bumped around a lot.
Are you still working on that grant or is it a different one time?
It's a different timeframe because I only had a couple of weeks in life. There was one, that one piece, well, there was a couple of pieces. Um, but I'm still working on it, so I have a year now where I can.
So I think AGNC will help you write those grants.
Yes, Mr. Lemon said she would.
Yep, that's nice.
Yeah, for sure. Anything else?
We are, as a county, I think I speak for the three of us. We're in support of one thirty nine getting fixed and whatever we gotta do to get it going, we got it.
And Garfield County is in support as well, and AGNC actually said that they would do a letter of support to for one thirty nine, so, and that represents multiple counties.
Is there any opportunity or value in asking CDOT to come and do a work session with us about roads? In our county?
Good.
Or maybe do a tour. The road. And if these holes down thirteen keep getting deeper and deeper, that supposedly were fixed, we could do a loop and have a challenge, tour. Yeah, so anyway, just a pop thought.
Perfect. We will adjourn this meeting as of twelve thirty two.